Live. Good evening, everyone. Like to call the January 20th, 2021 meeting of the Planning Commission to order. We are conducting today's meeting in a virtual setting using Zoom. Members of the public may view and listen to the meeting live online through the city's website as noted on the agenda. If you please join Commissioner Tori Trejo, she leaves us in the flag salute. If you turn off your video so we can see the flag.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Stuart, can we have the roll call, please?
But first reminder for staff, consultants, and applicants, please turn off your video and put yourselves on mute until your item comes up. Moving on to a roll call, Commissioner Gario.
There.
Commissioner Taliio.
Here.
Commissioner Curly Trejo.
Here.
Commissioner Watts.
Here.
Commissioner Yeomans.
Here.
Okay, moving on to public comments, Stuart, do we have any public comments for items not on the agenda?
I have not received any public comments.
No public comments. So move to consent calendar. All matters listed on a consent calendar considered to be routine. All will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of planning commission request specific items be removed from consent calendar for separate action. And that item, first item is the recommendation to approve the action minutes of January 2nd, 2021. Do I have a motion and a second?
January 6th, you mean?
What did I say, 2nd? January 6th.
I will, I will move to approve. There's just one slight correction. My name is spelled wrong in the, in the, in the minutes, first time around, so not a big deal, but I did notice it, but I will move to approve.
Who is the second?
Me.
Oh, okay, Gary. So a motion and a second. Stuart, you want to take the roll?
Yes. Commissioner Gario.
Hi.
Commissioner Taliio.
Hi.
Commissioner Curly Trejo.
Hi.
Commissioner Watts.
Hi.
And Commissioner Yeomans.
And that passes 5-0. We'll move to a public hearing. We have notice on that, Stuart.
Yes, we will move to the public hearing portion of the meeting. Any person may submit written comments to the planning commission before or during the public hearing in support or opposition to the approval of the projects in the manner prescribed in the important notice at the top of the agenda. If you challenge any of the projects in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the commission secretary at or prior to the public hearing. Any person dissatisfied with the decision of the planning commission may file an appeal to the commission's decision. Said appeal must be filed within 15 calendar days after the planning commission's decision. The appeal must be filed on the appropriate community development department form and be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee.
Thank you. The first item under public hearing is planning application number PA 20-0724. It's a modification, application to modify an existing building and a conditional use permit for a wireless telecommunications facility to accommodate new wireless equipment located at 41258 Margarita Road. How many, you have a staff report?
Yes, I do. And everybody can see this?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm presenting 41258 Margarita Road AT&amp;T mod. This project is a modification application to modify an existing building and a conditional use permit for a wireless telecommunications facility, which is to accommodate a new wireless equipment located at the prominent medical office complex. The project is located in a 1.56 acre parcel and is generally located on the southeast corner of North General Kearney and Margarita Road at 41258 Margarita Road. Here I'll speak about the site's history. The original development plan for the 14,000, was for a 14,600 square foot medical office building, which was approved by planning commission June 26, 2002. On May 11th, the planning commission approved a conditional use permit for the wireless facility that is located within the tower of this building. On October 31st, 2019, staff received a pre-application for a new 50-foot-tall mono-eucalyptus tree. At, out of that meeting, staff provided comments to provide a fully screened alternative. And so on July 28th, 2020, Jared Hermelin, on behalf of AT&amp;T, has submitted this modification application to amend this development plan and conditional use permit to modify the increase in tower height from 34 feet to 50 feet for the new fully concealed wireless antenna facility. On this slide, you see the first major proposal, which was a pre-application, and it was to expand the existing facilities on site, which was for 50-foot-tall mono-eucalyptus tree and eight-foot-tall antennas, as well as supporting equipment on the parking lot. So this was what was originally proposed during the pre-application. On the first iteration of the architecturally-integrated wireless antenna facility, the plans consisted of extending the tower height and the existing materials continued vertically up the, up the enclosure at the rear of the property as well. So here you'll see the first iteration. And so what it is, includes the tower that you see here shown, as well as what is within the tower. Within the tower, it includes the installation of 12 antennas, 36 remote radio units, surge suppressors, and it's all within this 20 by 23 tower enclosure. The equipment enclosure at the rear of the property includes a four outdoor cabinets, GPS equipment, the generator enclosure, and this is within an eight-foot block wall, eight-foot-tall block wall. Within this approximately 15 by 21-foot enclosure, it is going to be painted to match the existing building, and they're proposing landscaping at the perimeter of these walls, which includes vines and shrubs as well. So after some staff comment, we wanted to give purpose to justify the increase and also create more articulation and purpose for the, for the building. So that is why this is essentially what we have, which is this monolithic tower that's warranted since it is, it is compatible with the eclectic Mediterranean architecture style, and the clock tower is what is, is giving the purpose for the tower. You, you'll see the architectural materials are carried through the top of the tower. That includes the terracotta tile that's going to match the existing. You also have those deep horizontal riglets that's carried all the way to the top. The medallions, the accents are also reintroduced at the top of the tower, as are the exposed rafters. And what is new here is that 10 by 10 clock face, which provides some relief to the facade of, of the tower. Here you'll see that the architecture is integrated. It's 360 architecture where every elevation of the tower has articulation. The decorative elements are continued on the north, south, east, and west elevations, where the clock face is not present. The horizontal patterns are broken by the recessed faux windows, and the trim and decorative medallion are also included at the top of these towers on the south, north, and east elevation, and those are going to be integrated to match the existing windows of the building as well. Here's a realistic rendering that the applicant has provided. It's a photo simulation that shows, you know, realistic rendering of what this would look like. Staff has found that in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act, the proposed project has been deemed categorically exempt from further environmental review per section 15301 Class 1 existing facilities for the building modification, and it is exempt for the wireless facility upgrades under 15303 Class 3 conversion of small structures. With that said, staff does recommend approval for PA 200724, subject to the conditions of approval. And I'm also going to thank the applicant for working with staff to get to this iteration of the design. Jared Hermelin and Jessica Greven are here to answer any questions as well, should, should you have any. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Do I have any questions for staff at this point? Commissioner Watts?
Yeah, I may, is, I assume the clock will be functional and will be required to be functional at all times? Is that a safe assumption?
Yeah, that is correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, I will now open the public hearing. Stuart?
Yes, as a reminder, any public comments that were received by email or mail prior to this meeting will be read into the record. Any person wishing to submit comments during the meeting must submit comments via email prior to the close of the public hearing for the comment to be considered as part of the record. The email address where comments can be submitted can be found on the agenda.
Okay, does he, well, excuse me. Does the applicant wish to address the commission on this item?
Uh, no, no, sir, not at this time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Yeoman. They have, we received any other public comments at this point, Stuart?
We have received no public comments for this item.
Okay. Any other further questions of staff or the applicant at this point before we move forward? Okay, hearing none. I will close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission for discussion and a motion.
I think that staff and the applicant have done a great job in this project, so I'll move for approval.
Mr. Yeomans, move.
I will second it. I think it's definitely an improvement over the eucalyptus tree, for sure. So yeah, I will definitely second it.
Second by Charlie Trejo. Any further discussion? I agree, it looks good as well. So that being said, Stuart, will you take the vote then?
I will. Commissioner Gario.
Hi.
Commissioner Taliio.
Hi.
Commissioner Curly Trejo.
Hi.
Commissioner Watts.
Hi.
And Commissioner Yeomans.
Okay, and that passes 5-0. Moving on, we have item number two, which is planning application PA 16-0966, conditional use permit for Hilton Garden Inn to attain a type 70 ABC license, which is on sale general but restricted. The site's located approximately 900 feet north of Rancho California Road on Jefferson Avenue. Eric, do we have a staff report, please?
Yes, we do. Give me one moment here to share it. I'll get it up for you guys. Can everybody see my slide?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you. Planning application PA 16-0966 is a conditional use permit to allow the Hilton Garden Inn to obtain a type 70 ABC license. Project is generally located here, 900 feet north of the Rancho California Road and Jefferson Avenue intersection, and it's in the red box area you see before you. As I'm sure many of you know, the hotel is still currently under construction. Initially, this permit for this use will allow for the type 70 license. This license allows beer, wine, and distilled spirits. The alcohol will be available through the hotel's restaurants, their bar, and of course, if you order room service, you can get some that way as well. The hours of service will coincide with the restaurant and bar from 11:00 a.m. until midnight. It's important to note that live entertainment is not proposed as part of this application. Let's take a quick look here at the site plan for the hotel. The green boxed area you see, I just wanted to highlight that that, on the first floor, that's where the restaurant and the bar area is located, so you have a chance to see where that is. Environmentally, staff has determined this project is exempt from CEQA. It actually qualifies for two exemptions. The first is the 15301 existing facility, since it's a negligible expansion of a previously approved use, and it also falls under 15061, the common sense exemption, because it can be seen with certainty that simply adding the alcohol component to a already approved hotel will not have any detrimental environmental effects. With that being said, staff recommends that the planning commission approve the project, subject to the proposed resolution and recommended conditions of approval. This concludes staff's presentation. I'm available to answer any questions if you have them, and the applicant should be on as well if you'd like to speak with them. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Okay, we'll take any questions from commission in order. Commissioner Taliio?
None.
Commissioner Watts?
None.
Commissioner Yeomans? Commissioner Joe Trejo?
I do have a question for Eric. So is this, is this a typical liquor license for hotels in our city?
This is a typical license for hotels per ABC, and I can say that ABC has informed me that this is the appropriate license type for this type of a hotel, specifically says in the description for suite hotels, and that's what this is. And I would say that as hotels continue to be built, this type of amenity is going to become more and more common. I was in a courtyard by Marriott not too long ago, actually before the pandemic, and they had this similar setup in there, so it is becoming much more prevalent.
Okay, thank you.
And I have no comments. Okay, moving on, I will now open public hearing, and Stuart?
Yes, again, as a reminder, any public comments that were received by email or mail prior to this meeting will be read into the record. Any person wishing to submit comments during the meeting must submit comments via email prior to the close of the public hearing or the comment to be considered as part of the record. Email address where comments can be submitted can be found on the agenda.
Thank you. Does the applicant wish to address the commission?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay. Do we have any other comments from the public, Stuart?
I've received no comments for this item.
Okay, seeing no further questions or comments, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission for discussion. Anyone? Hey, seeing none, we'll go for a motion and a second then.
I'll move the motion. A second.
Very wise. Commissioner Watts was, move the motion, and Commissioner Taliio, a second?
Yeah.
Okay.
And just to clarify, it's just to move the staff's recommendation is the motion, yeah.
Yes, the motion is, I said that, I realize that, as I said it, you're right.
Good catch. Okay, Stuart?
Commissioner Gario.
Hi.
Commissioner Taliio.
Hi.
Commissioner Curly Trejo.
Hi.
Commissioner Watts.
Hi.
And Commissioner Yeomans.
Mr. Yeomans, was that? All right, okay, that passes 5-0. Thank you very much. Move to the next item. Planning application. Where was it? I lost my track. No. Where did we go?
Number three on our list.
Yeah.
Planning application 19-0622.
To, planning application PA 19-0662, a wireless facility application to allow J5 infrastructure partners to install a new 50-foot-high wireless telecommunications facility located at 42069 PLOR Drive. And Eric, do we have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you. P19-0622 is a wireless facilities application to allow for the construction of a new 50-foot-high wireless telecommunications facility. The project is located in the red box area you see before you. I went ahead and put a little green rectangle in this, you kind of get a better sense of where on the project site the project is located. It's right there adjacent to Gosh Ford, as well as another kind of overflow lot for the car dealerships. The tower measure 50 feet, and it'll be disguised as a faux palm tree. There are existing palm trees located nearby. If you look across the Gosh Ford property, as well as the Mazda property, and the Little Dealer Drive that separates the two, you'll see many palm trees in that area. Support equipment will be housed in an adjacent equipment enclosure just slightly down the slope from the tower, and access to the site will be restricted to authorized personnel only. Take a look here at the site plan. You can see Dealer Drive, and then again, I just put a red box here to show where the tower and the equipment enclosure will be located, so it's right up there kind of along the property line. Take a look at some views here. This would be the view if you were looking from the freeway at the tower. But for these types of applications, it's the photo sims that really tell the story of what you're going to see. We'll take a look at some of those now. So here's a similar view, kind of from the shoulder of the I-15 freeway. If you were kind of heading towards the north and looking towards the east there, towards the dealership, you see the palm tree. This right here is if you're looking north, a little bit further away, you can see the large auto mall sign there, and see the palm tree in there. And this right here is the view if you're on the freeway heading south, coming up to the project site. We've got it pointed out here. For CEQA staff has determined the project is exempt per 15332, since it meets the requirements of the infill development exemption. Based on the information presented, staff recommends the planning commission approve the project, subject to the proposed resolution and recommended conditions of approval. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions. The applicant should be on as well if you'd like to speak with them. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Again, we'll take questions from the commission in order. Commissioner Taliio?
No questions, just a remark that the palm tree is a lot, but more acceptable than the eucalyptus tree we just saw a minute ago. Let's stay away from eucalyptus trees.
Commissioner Watts?
Um, no, I have nothing.
Commissioner Yeomans?
Yeomans.
Mr. Joe Trejo?
No questions.
And I have none other than concur with Commissioner Taliio. They've come a long way. Okay, seeing none, I'll now open the public hearing. Stuart, a reminder again, please?
Again, as a reminder, any public comments that were received by email and mail prior to this meeting will be read into the record. Any person wishing to submit comments during the meeting must submit comments via email prior to the close of the public hearing for the comment to be considered as part of the record. The email address where comments can be submitted can be found on the agenda.
Thank you. We have any other public comments at this point?
I've received no public comments.
Okay. No public comments have been received. Seeing that, then I will close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission for discussion and a motion.
Honorable Chair, I'm so sorry if I missed it, but did we ask the applicant if they wanted to address the commission?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Let's strike one. You got me. Okay. Back to the commission for discussion. I close the public hearing, back to this discussion. Anybody? Okay, saying no discussion, then we'll ask for a motion.
I saw move the PA 19-0622.
Thank you. And a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Commissioner Yeomans. So a motion by Commissioner Charlie Trejo, second by Commissioner Yeomans. Stuart, call, please.
Commissioner Gario.
Hi.
Commissioner Taliio.
Hi.
Commissioner Curly Trejo.
Hi.
Commissioner Watts.
Hi.
And Commissioner Yeomans.
Hi.
And that motion passed as 5-0. Thank you. So move to commission, or commission reports, because we are in a virtual setting, I will ask my colleagues individually for their comments. Commissioner Taliio?
I have none.
Commissioner Watts?
None.
Commissioner Yeomans? Mr. Charlie Trejo?
Um, just one. I know that this isn't really possible right now, but as I was kind of driving around the city recently, I was thinking it would be really great if we could have a field trip again and being able to see sites that we have voted on and what the progress is on those sites. So maybe somewhere in the future down the road in 2021, I think that would be really valuable.
I couldn't agree more. Absolutely. Yeah, it's, it's always great to do that. I mean, as, I know when I'm driving around, I look at the projects that are being developed, seeing if they're on course, so to speak, but going back and seeing them when they're finished is a good way to go.
Yep.
Okay.
Duly noted. Duly noted. We will look forward to that as well.
Thanks, Luke.
Mr. Watson. Okay, do we have a community development director report?
You know, Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything formal to update the commission on tonight. We have a lot of things in the works, but there's nothing I don't think that you all aren't up to date on, but it's going to be a big year. So stay tuned, and of course, I'm available for any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Public Works Director Ron?
Good evening, commissioners. So I just wanted to give an update, I will, as I will continuously, continuously will, on our CWD project. This week, you saw that two lanes on Pachanga were shut down in order to shut down a lane on the westbound Temecula Parkway. This week, that was due to potholing. The contractor did a great job of removing, as they moved along in their potholing, removing the cones so that it could open up traffic. So we only experienced about a six-to-seven minute delay along Temecula Parkway, which was a little bit better than we, we had hoped. But next week starts the actual pipeline replacement, so we would expect much bigger delays next week, but so far, the public seems to be utilizing the alternate routes. So, so far, so good, but I'll keep you updated on it. Next week will be a little bit heavier of traffic, so expect more delays. And then we just wanted to pass along, and you probably saw the email, go out that the Sam Hicks Park Playground is going to be virtually, there's going to be a virtual ceremony next week on the 26th at 11:00 a.m. So that park has been renovated right over here by Old Town, and you'll see that being utilized very shortly.
Excellent. Thank you.
Could I interrupt real quick? Maricela, this wasn't on the agenda, but subcommittee reports, if we have any, can we discuss that?
Did we have any subcommittee reports, anybody? I don't think so.
We know we have.
Did we?
Go ahead, go ahead, Gary.
We had a thousand element subcommittee on for the general plan, and we had the consultant come in and speak to us, laid out the plan, and we talked about a lot of different opportunities for the city and what the city needs to do to reach our arena goals. And I thought it was a good meeting, but I just concluded at 6:40, at 5:45, so. You want to add anything, Gary?
No, I don't have too much to add. It was a good discussion. I think there are some real challenges in selling the ultimate product, but certainly I think everyone is aware of that, and I'm optimistic.
So what was our, our first general plan was in 93?
Uh, yes, that sounds right. Yep.
Come a long way. I'd like to compare what we did back in 93 to what we're coming up with today, see just how many big changes there are.
Only different, I think.
Yeah. I don't even know if you can, if it's apples, apples to apples at this point, but yeah, that would be interesting. The arena cycles are every eight years, so we're coming out of an eight-year cycle and preparing for the next one.
Yeah, okay. Thank you all. All right. I guess we'll go to adjournment. We'll adjourn to the next regular meeting of the planning commission, held on Wednesday, February 3rd, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. City Council Chambers, 41,000 Main Street, Temecula, California. Do you have a motion and a second? City Council Chambers, 41,000 Main Street, Temecula, California, do you have a motion or a second?
I saw move.
Motion by Commissioner Charlie Trejo?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Yeomans, all in favor, Stuart?
All in favor.
Aye.
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 See y'all then, don't get blown away.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.